Hey, we're ready to go.
Okay, good. Thank you. Welcome to Tuesday, May 12th, 2020 Montgomery County Commission Meeting. This meeting is being conducted by video conference via zoom.us due to the COVID-19 pandemic. This meeting will be live streamed on the county's Facebook page at Montgomery County, will be available on local public access television, DATV, and will be posted on the county's website at www.mcohio.org per guidelines approved by House Bill 197. Just to give an update, Commissioner Lieberman is not able to be on the video, but she is here and can hear us. So, thank you, Commissioner Lieberman. Welcome. And Emily, you want to recall the roll?
Commissioner Lieberman?
Here.
Commissioner Rice?
Here.
Commissioner Dodge?
Here. County Engineer, Paul.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Administrator, and ladies and gentlemen on the Internet. We have a number of resolutions today. All are road closings for pipe replacements. The first is Resolution 20527 for Frederick Pike between Little Rock York Road and Meeker Road lasting for approximately two months. This next is 528 for Kiefer Road between Anthony Road and Brown's Run Road lasting for approximately two months. 529 is Lutheran Church Road between Huffman Road and Dayton Farmersville Road lasting for approximately two days. 530 is Lutheran Church Road between Hempel Road and Dayton Farmersville Road lasting for approximately one week. 531 is Brown's Run Road between Kiefer Road and State Route 725 lasting for approximately one week. And 532 is Union Road between Bear Creek Road and Manning Road lasting for approximately two days.
I move to approve.
Second.
Do I say all those in favor? All those in favor? And then call the roll.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodge?
Yes. Okay, Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab.
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab, we have Resolution 533. Apply for a grant from the Ohio or from the Office of Criminal Justice Services for opiate testing supplies, training, and travel in the amount of $54,103.15.
I move for approval.
I second that motion.
Okay, you want to call the roll?
Commissioner Lieberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodge?
Yes.
County Coroner?
Under the County Coroner, we have Resolution 534 National Network of Public Health Institutes for the National Disaster Related Mortality Surveillance Program in the amount of $50,338. And Resolution 535, the Ohio Department of Health for Rapid Fatal Overdose Surveillance Services in an amount of $60,000. Both of these are acceptance of grants.
I move for approval.
Second.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodge?
Yes. County Administrator?
Under the County Administrator and under the Clerk's Office, we have approval of the minutes of the meeting on May 5th, 2020. Resolution 536, approval of bills. And Resolution 537, approval of travel and expenses. Both of those lists are available in the Clerk's Office.
I move for approval.
I second.
All those in favor?
Commissioner Lieberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodge?
Yes. Administrative Services?
Under Administrative Services, we have Resolution 538, Approval Personnel Actions. That list is available in the Clerk's Office. Resolution 539, authorizing a payment by warrant to Ashley Thornhill. This is for $3,000 for a vehicle. Resolution 540, appointment of Pam Gilbert, Montgomery County Insurance Representative, as authorized agent for the FEMA Public Assistance Grant Program. Resolution 541, solicit bids for rope rescue training for the Office of Emergency Management. Resolution 542, select a bid and authorize an agreement with Robinson Cabinets, Inc. for the Court's Bench Hardening Project at their sole bid of $155,100 through December 31st, 2020. Commissioners, this is for our first phase of the Court Security Project, which is a multiple-phase project. We also have Resolution 543, amend the agreement with Indiana State Police Department and authorize the Miami Valley Regional Crime Lab to expand services to provide controlled substance abuse and drug case analysis by increasing the original amount by $600,000 for a revised total of $1,200,000 and extending the term through December 31st, 2021. This is an expansion of our existing contract with Indiana for our crime lab. And this is a good book of business for our crime lab to do more testing and expand their work there. We also have three authorization of price agreements for environmental services with options to extend. Resolution 544, Everett J. Prescott, Inc. for fire hydrants and parts through April 30th, 2021. Resolution 545, Ferguson Enterprises, Inc. for fire hydrants and parts through April 30th, 2021. Resolution 546, Joe R. Fink Construction Company, Inc. for concrete repair services through March 31st, 2021.
I move for approval.
I second it.
All those in favor?
Commissioner Lieberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodge?
Yes. Environmental Services?
Thank you, Commissioners. Under Environmental Services, we have Resolution 547, authorizing an agreement with Intuform Technologies LLC for construction of the Terrence Villa Sanitary Sewer Improvement Project at their lowest and best bid of $159,610 through October 31st, 2020.
I move to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Commissioner Lieberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodge?
Yes. OMB?
Under OMB, Commissioners, we have Resolution 548, authorizing appropriation amendments. Resolution 549, authorizing additional appropriations. Resolution 550, authorizing cash transfers. Resolution 551, authorizing appropriation decreases. Resolution 552, authorizing appropriation amendments by transfer from general fund contingencies. And Resolution 553, authorizing a 2020 phased budget plan to balance the general fund budget by year-end in response to the loss of revenue from the COVID-19 pandemic. If I could add, Commissioners, on the final resolution, I'd like to say a few words. As of the result of the COVID-19 pandemic, our local national economy has taken a big hit. The loss of revenue from the decrease in sales and property and casino taxes, along with declines in local government funds, payment for services, require us to make some tough decisions. Last month, we cut $17.9 million from our budget. This was the first of several phases of the budget adjustments that we anticipated making out throughout the year. It is important to note that we do not anticipate at this point the need for any layoffs or furloughs. But we may see personnel reductions due to attrition, which is the way that we would like to do it if we have to do it. Through attrition, it allows people to leave naturally versus us having to make some changes. Today, I'm proposing three additional phases of the budget reductions for the remainder of 2020. Phase two is a reduction of $5 million to be implemented in June. Phase three is a reduction of $3 million to be implemented in July and August. And phase four is a reduction of $3.1 million to be implemented in November and December. Combine these changes will result in a total budget adjustment of $29 million. It is important to note that this is a 21% decrease. If you look at the nine months over the year, that this will be impacted by the pandemic. Some of these budget adjustments include, but are not limited to, a freeze in capital investments for the remainder of the year, moving $1.5 million commitment for preschool promise to the Human Services Levy so that our program can continue and we don't make any cuts to that program. We just have a different revenue stream to provide those services. Canceling our Fall Edge Program, making targeted reductions to the general fund operating budget, and continuing our hiring freeze. We do not make these recommendations lightly, Commissioners. And these programs help our government run smoothly. And in the case of our capital investments and our hiring, directly benefit our community and our economy, especially in the case of our Edge Program. These are not easy decisions to make, but these are the decisions that have to be made. I want to thank you, Commissioners, for your leadership and supporting the administration as we take the steps necessary to ensure that the budget remains stable during this difficult time. When we make these decisions, we want to ensure that we can continue to serve our residents effectively and efficiently as possible, recognizing that Montgomery County has been here for our citizens. Key services have continued. When we look at water, when we look at sewer, when we look at trash, JFS, our county engineer, our Stillwater Services, our administrative services, the people that support our buildings. Montgomery County has been and will continue to be here. Again, I want to thank the Commissioners. We'll continue to monitor the budget and to make recommendations accordingly based on the adjustments that we need to do to prepare and keep a balanced budget. Again, thank you, Commissioners, for your support.
Well, thank you. I have to give a shout out to you and your team. You've made some tough decisions, but you know, I'm very comfortable with them. You know, with the decrease in taxes and local government funds, you know, we have no choice but to make these tough decisions. No question about it. But we are being proactive and taking these steps so that we can be fiscally responsible for with our county's overall operating budget and our general fund budget. You know, I also want to let our citizens and businesses know that we are still working to serve you and that our operations will remain strong and focused to help our community recover. You know, we're all going to get through this together. So, thank you again, Michael.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, thank you, Michael.
Well, I would just also add, I know we haven't passed motion yet or approved it, but this is a very tough time. And I just want to emphasize everything that everyone said. But to our county employees, I just want them to know how much we all deeply appreciate all the work that you are doing and the important role that you play. You truly are our most valuable asset. Without our employees, we can't fulfill our mission. So, we are keeping that in mind as we make these tough decisions. We don't know what the future is. But you are a top priority for us because through you, we are able to serve this community. And we just can't get it done. So, thank you, thank you, thank you. And we are in this together and we will pull through this and be stronger on the other side.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I will move for approval, but I just want to add that I think it's worth pointing out again that these reductions are going to amount to almost $30 million. And that's 16% of our overall general.
The laster. Audio.
2008 happened and we cut about that amount then. So, the key here though, and I know we keep saying it, but we are continuing to provide the critical programs and services to our community. And of course, we're very hopeful that the economy reopens. And as some are predicting, it could bounce back by fourth quarter. We'll see. But we know that we had to hold the line with these reductions. And so, Michael, you guys, you right away reacted, and I think we're in a much better place. I wish we weren't here, but we are. So, with that, I will move for approval.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I second.
All those in favor?
Commissioner Lieberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodge?
Yes. All right, Human Services?
Under Human Services, under Human Services Planning and Development, we have Resolution 554, authorizing a memorandum of understanding with the Miami Valley Community Action Partnership to provide data and utilize the Dayton Montgomery County Homeless Management Information System. This resolution, Commissioners, is for data sharing during this COVID-19 period. We also have amended agreements by reallocating Ohio Children's Trust Fund to expand services to include COVID-19 response activities through June 30th, 2020. Resolution 555, West Ohio Community Action Partnership in the amount of $13,974.60. This is for our nurturing parent program. Resolution 556, Dayton Children's Hospital in the amount of $14,767.20. This is for neglect, abuse, and prevention services. Under Department of Job and Family Services, we have Resolution 557, authorizing a payment by warrant to Burlington Coat Factory. This is for $1,792.39. This is for emergency clothing. We have Resolution 558, authorizing an agreement with Richard Brumberg, Ph.D. for clinical services through December 31st, 2020. This is for evaluating and for completing our parent assessments. And then we have authorization agreements for substitute care services through March 31st, 22. This is for children placed in custody services. Resolution 559, A Mother's Touch, Inc. Resolution 560, A Place of Hope, LLC. Resolution 561, Adolescent Oasis, Inc. Resolution 562, Agape for Youth, Inc. Resolution 564, Christian Children's Home of Ohio. Resolution 564, Christian, excuse me, Resolution 565, Cornell Abraxas Group, Inc. Resolution 566, Future Promise. Resolution 567, Kelly Youth Services. Resolution 568, Malone's Nursing Consultants, LLC. Resolution 569, Marie's House of Hope, Inc. Resolution 570, My Brother's Keeper. Resolution 571, Nicholas Residential Treatment Center for Youth. Resolution 572, Ohio Mentor, Inc. Resolution 573, Second Chance Dayton. Resolution 574, Seeds for Life, Inc. Resolution 575, Strive House, Inc. Resolution 576, The Marsh Foundation. Resolution 577, The Village Network. Resolution 578, Unks Place. And Resolution 579, Youth Villages, Inc. Commissioners, we will bring on about 25 of these each week. We've got a little bit over 100 of these, so we'll do them in 25 increments. And they support our children in custody that are in most in need.
I move for approval.
Second.
All those in favor?
Second.
Commissioner Lieberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodge?
Yes. Okay, under County Commissioners, 20-0580, accept the reappointment of Brett Wirwell as the Treasurer's Appointee to the Investment Advisory Committee for a two-year term through February 1st, 2022. 20-0581, establish Montgomery County Office of Cares Act effective May 12th, 2020. Before we move to approve it, County Administrator, do you want to talk about it, about the Cares Act?
Thank you, Commissioners.
Creation of the.
I want to thank you for giving us the ability to do this, Commissioners. As you know, we received the first installment of Cares Act funding directly to the county. Because the Cares Act will expire on December 2020, December 31st, 2020, we have a limited time, a very limited time, to create and to appropriate the programs and the criteria for distributing these funds to our community. And additionally, we know that these funds, because the Treasury has made it crystal clear to us, will be subject to intense audit scrutiny. So, we have to adhere to strict guidelines provided to us by the U.S. Treasury. We have to track these dollars very carefully. But we also have to ensure that the funding gets allocated appropriately where it's needed in this time. We must act quickly and deliberately and strategically. And I applaud the Board of County Commissioners for their foresight and vision as we work to distribute these desperately needed financial resources to our community. This resolution will allow us to move forward with the Office of Cares Act. And June 1st, Marveen and her team anticipate having the first Cares Act program in place to support our local businesses. In addition, they are developing the other programs necessary under the Cares Act to help citizens and businesses with rental assistance, food, and other social services. I'm very happy and very proud today to announce that Marveen Mitchell Cook has been and will be, under your resolution, Commissioners, appointed Director of the Office of Cares Act. She has the knowledge and the skill set necessary to get this work done. She's done this work at the state before, and now she's with our team, and it's great to have her. And so, we're transferring her over from the Workforce Division into the new office. And we look forward to seeing the programs that her and her team puts together to help our community in this time. Again, Commissioners, I thank you for your support and for giving me the opportunity and my administration to create an office where we can track and deploy these resources to our community very quickly. Thank you very much.
I want to add, great appointment with the head of department, you know, as Director of Workforce. And we know, that's my, um, Mark, whoever, and Mike, and you know, um, we've been just down here. So, we're just getting back to you. So, now that kind of works, uh, kind of, you know, it's a very, uh, it's a lot of this. Off, up here, that, uh, and I noticed, um, put together a team, and they're all off this up, and that's pretty good. So, I don't know if they, we have until December, but it's going to go down. We wanted to show that, um, that, you know, we're, we're, you know, we're, you know, we're, you know, we're already kind of getting to the job. Seven different things. You know, we already got a gift card, but.
Commissioner Rice, did you have anything you wanted to add?
Well, yes, I mean, I just, I know we just passed our resolution today on the budget. So we know that this pandemic has had a huge impact on our community. But with the Cares Act and the establishment of this new office, where we will focus efforts to make sure we take advantage of every, actually, penny that we can to help our community recover, is really a good move. Yes, we don't have a lot of time, but we've got great people, a great team working on it. And we are going to do everything within the letter of the law, within the spirit of what the federal guidelines are. We know we're going to be heavily audited, so we go that, go into it with that. You know, we fully realize that. But it is up to us to make these investments throughout the community where they can have the greatest benefit for the most people. So I am quite happy that we were one of the counties that qualified to get this direct deposit. So we are actually able to move even faster than some of the other counties. So we'll take full advantage, and I have great confidence in the team that you've appointed and pulled together. And we will be working with them. And once again, we're all in this together. And we're going to make this federal assistance really benefit our community to the best of our ability.
Thank you, Commissioner.
I'll go ahead. Should I go ahead? And we haven't approved it yet. Do you want to say something, Judy, before we vote?
No, I was just going to add that we're just so grateful for this financial support from the federal government. And it's, you know, this funding is so critical to help our community recover from this pandemic. And will be used to support families and small businesses who are struggling each and every day to get by, as well as some educational and agricultural services. So we're so appreciative of this, and it's so needed. So.
Right. And ninety-two million dollars sounds like a lot, but it is so great that, you know, we could actually use a lot more than that, but we are grateful for ninety-two million. With that, I will go ahead and move to approve.
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Commissioner Lieberman?
Yes.
Commissioner Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodge?
Yes. Okay. With that, any more comments from the County Administrator?
Commissioners, I won't be long. Again, I always, I just want to thank our employees across the county and our elected officials. We have really, through this event, I think we have really all bonded as a team. And the elected officials have been very supportive of the direction that we have been moving, working with their departments. I know Paul is here and Ward representing Matt. This has truly been a countywide team effort to try to keep our core services going to people. Our employees have done a yeoman's task working through this entire event in a series of events, if you will, if you start from last year. And I also want to thank you, Commissioners, for your leadership and support. Without that, the administration would be ineffective. And you have continued to back us as we have worked with our state and federal partners to implement. And even through the process of getting the Cares Act money, you have continued to back us. So thank you, Commissioners, for your continued leadership as we get through this. And thank you again to our employees. That's all I had, Commissioner.
Well. I just have one thing to add. You know, our team, you know, we constantly are thanking them, but things have just continued to go on without missing a beat. And a great example of that is I am on the Two Generation Advisory Committee. Okay, and what that means is, that's a group that are advising the two generational push that Kelly Gears and Michelle Niedermeyer are working on and doing a fabulous job on. And what this is, the Two Generation Approach to Poverty, really, it brings everyone around the table to work together to help eliminate poverty. And some of the things that we heard about this morning that have been happening, just amazing, Dayton Public Schools and others, all connecting and working together. Actually, my video worked this morning, so I don't know what happened. But they, it's just, again, you know, not missing a beat with this with the past couple of months. And because the work has to continue and it has to, and now there's even, you know, more work that has to be done. But hearing about the number of families that are being fed by a lot of these nonprofits who are all part of this group was really, really, really great this morning to hear about. Our, our community, again, is so generous and steps up and meets the need. And so I just wanted to share about that. We've got a lot of work to do around this, but the federal government is actually considering, Congress is considering a Two Generational Approach Bill. And so we've been lobbying hard for that at the national level with NACO, but we're going to have a local effort as well. And that's all from me.
Commissioner Rice?
I really don't have any additional comments. I would just, you know, two really big things I've already talked about. So it's just still continues to, my second year of being on this commission, and they've been challenging times, but I feel totally blessed to serve with all of you and never more proud to be a public servant than through times like this.
You've done a great job, Commissioner.
Okay, I was just going to add that this week, things are starting to open up. Retail, some restaurants here is the end of the week and next week. And please, I urge our citizens, pay attention, please wear a mask, stay six feet away as much as you possibly can from other people, wash your hands. You know, this is so critical. If everybody runs out there and doesn't pay attention to these things, we may be in for quite some time this summer. So please, please, pay attention. You know, I've been to the grocery store several times. I can't tell you how frustrating it is to see so many people without masks on and not paying any attention to social distancing. So I'm just saying, please pay attention. So with that, we have our next meeting, Tuesday, May 19th, at 1:30. Move to adjourn?
I can move to adjourn.
Okay. Commissioner Lieberman? Maybe she can't hear. Can I move to adjourn? It's a second.
Yes.
Move to adjourn. Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Well, Commissioner, I guess I'll have to go through the roll.
Okay.
Rice?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodge?
Yes.
And Commissioner Lieberman? Okay.
Have a great weekend.